Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the May Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, I'd like everybody to rise and we'll say the pledge with Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and some alumni from Goodwilly.
(inaudible)
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 All right.
Superintendent Beam, I'm excited to be here. Would you like to kick us off?
Yes, Madam President. It's great to be here and to provide our official welcome to Goodwilly Elementary School, or, excuse me, Environmental School. I'd call to the podium Mr. Jason Yelding, the principal here at Goodwilly. Mr. Yelding. (applause)
Good evening, and on behalf of the Goodwilly family, I would like to welcome and thank our Board of Education, Superintendent Beam, and all community members joining us. I'm honored to stand before you tonight as a representative of Goodwilly and the building principle. In this role over the past year, I've come to learn quite a bit about environmental education, but more than anything, I've learned about the Goodwilly family. From my first visit, it was evident that staff and students here, past and present, have a bond that connects them in a very unique way. For example, tonight, we welcome back a group of seniors who just finished their final day of high school. So, kudos to them.[170.12][170.12](applause) In meeting with just one of these seniors last week, she explained that a nice contingent of Goodwilly alumni would be here with us this evening, and it is truly impressive that on their final day of school, they chose to join us here at a board meeting to celebrate their transition from their Forest Hills education to the next phase. So, really excited to have them here with us. This evening, we're actually going to celebrate one family in particular who's been a mainstay in the Goodwilly experience for decades. Two people who have so graciously given their time and knowledge to support student learning here. As you might expect, these are not individuals who seek out accolades or acknowledgements, but that makes them no less deserving. So, without further ado, I would like to turn this over to Ms. Ayers, who will share more details on our instructional highlight this evening, and two very special people.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening. Welcome to our Goodwilly home. Like Jason said, for our instructional highlight this evening, we're going to be focusing on two of our beloved Goodwilly artists and volunteers, Mike and Claire Poole. Originally, Mike and Claire were first introduced to GES as parents when their oldest child embarked on their Goodwilly journey. And now, over a decade later, Mike and Claire are still continuing their very own Goodwilly journey by giving back to our family. They, and at various times, their children, who are Goodwilly alum, they help to carry on the incredible traditions and teachings that originally brought them on board. The Pools, they primarily focus on our pioneer homestead. However, it's just this year that they have started to work with our students to actually rebuild the Cook Shelter in our Native American village. Both Mike and Claire actually have jobs outside of their Goodwilly work, but they volunteer their time on Friday mornings to work with our beautiful students. Their authentic instruction and guidance, it's rooted in the hands-on learning of our students. To maintain an active homestead, our students have to learn and work and think like pioneers. And when they work with the Pools, they use pioneer tools to make furniture, to make baskets, additional tools, food, and a variety of other items that might be needed. And as we move throughout even our core curriculum in the classroom, the lessons and the information that our students learn from the Pools, it's connected to studies in math and science through the use of the various tools and the construction of the items. For social studies, there is a direct reflection of early American life that can be found in our homestead and our Native American village, along with literature connections through historical fiction and nonfiction. Many of the projects that we do with the Pools are multi-year, ongoing projects. Working in the outdoors, we are at the mercy of Mother Nature and our living textbook. So, there's always work that needs to be done to maintain our authentic structures. At this time, I'm actually going to have Ellie and Owen share a little bit about their favorite projects and the value that they find within those projects. And these are two of our current fifth grade, beautiful Goodwilly students. Come on up.
My favorite activity with the Pools is weaving the chairs. We wove those with them. And the biggest lesson I've learned from it is that if you don't take your time and go slowly the first time, you're going to have to undo what you did and maybe a little bit more. But the Pools are always patient when you have to do that. I think that this will impact my life later on because if I do something slowly the first time, then I won't have to take twice the time to fix it and do it again. My favorite part of the Pools is that they, like every week with them, is a different week, and like, it also is a different adventure or a different thing that we're doing.
My favorite activity that I've done with the Pools is weaving the bowls because it taught me patience and paying attention to detail. Paying attention to detail helped me with hockey because if you just pay attention to the puck, then you're not, you're going to get knocked down and not necessarily succeed. Another thing that the Pools have helped me with is if you mess up, they're going to help you through it, and they're not just going to like, tell you to ruin, they're going to help you through it even if it includes destroying the item you've built and rebuilding it and helping you rebuild it.
So, as our students learn to work and create with their hands, as the pioneers did, they take great pride in knowing that so many Goodwilly family members that came before them have strived for common goals. Goals like creating a ladder for the loft of our log barn, carving thousands of shingles for not only the log barn but also the log cabin, cutting down trees and stripping the bark to create a new frame for our Cook Shelter. This commonality in all of these goals is created and fostered by the continued commitment of the Pools to not only our Goodwilly family but also our rich traditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody at the table want to say anything? I've got all these Goodwilly moms just jumping out of their chairs, so I'll stay quiet. Yeah, anybody?
It's not, alums, soon-to-be alums. I don't know if you're planning to say anything later, but can you at least just stand up real quick and let us know where you're hailing from because you have the decency and niceness to be here tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Which school?
We're all from Easther.
Well, thank you for being with us and good luck. Congratulations. We are very lucky to have you out making the world a better place with this great tradition, rich history that you have experienced here. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for the awesome update, Ellie and Owen.
Anybody else? Any comments? Thank you very much. It's, I get very excited. Oh, yep. Oh, no. Sorry.
I couldn't help myself. I was curious. I mean, I'm not sure if everybody in the room is well aware of Goodwilly's tradition of nicknames for their students, but I am curious, Ellie and Owen, how you earned your nicknames.
Ellie, do you want to start? Okay. You can come out. Female?
Oh, my nickname is Buttercup because I have blonde hair.
My nickname is Deek because it's a hockey move and I play hockey, so.
Got it. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Well, we love being here. We are always very excited when our meeting is here. Thankfully, the years go fast in some ways because we get to come back every few years, and I always look forward to visiting out here. So, thank you for sharing, and thank you for sharing your stories tonight. All right. And we have more stories to tell here.
We do. We are at a special time of the year where we are celebrating growth in so many different ways, and we are celebrating the growth of a new program that we started four years ago. Our Project Next program is housed at Northern High School. And here, just to talk a little bit about this special milestone, introduce our teacher and a couple of students. It's the principal at Northern High School, Mr. John Gregory. Mr. Gregory.
Good evening. It was just a little bit over four years ago that we brought a group of educators and students to the board to propose a new program, a project-based learning, cross-curricular program, where the teachers really try to tie the cross-curricular subjects together and do it in a hands-on, engaging manner. In just one week from tonight, our first pioneering class will be graduating, so we thought it'd be interesting to bring them back and let them give some perspective on their last four years. So, tonight, we have with us Hannah Fletter, who coincidentally is an alum from here as well, Dominic Grossa, and one of our sophomore and senior teachers, Sarah Irwin. So, who wants to go first?
I never realized the impact that Project Next had on me until I visited Butler this past semester. And during my time, during my visit at Butler, they were talking about how we will be actively engaging within the career development program. And during that time, we'll be working on cover letters, resumes, mock interviews, getting internships, and working on our soft skills. And while they were saying that, I was like, in my head, just check, 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 check. As I've written professional cover letters, I have a resume, we've done mock interviews, I've had two internships, and I've been working on my soft skills for the past four years. And I just, like, that, like, realization for not only me but also my peers as well, I think has set us apart and has given us an advantage of what most students won't get until their sophomore year in college.
Over the four years of me being in Project Next, I didn't really realize who I wanted to be after college until my senior year, when we were able to go out into the community and find our internships. I had the opportunity to go and work with a professional designer in Grand Rapids, Michigan, named R.C. Kalin, where I got to design dresses and help him sew dresses together that were actually showed in the Paris Fashion Week event, which is one of the biggest fashion events in the entire world. So, that was a really amazing thing, and I don't think I would have been able to do that without Project Next. Project Next has taught me to be myself, trust my teachers, trust my peers, and, most importantly, trust my community to support me and get me through the things that I want to actually do, and use my passions as a priority instead of put them aside as a side hobby. I am so proud to say that I am now going to Columbia College in Chicago to study fashion design, and hopefully, will be able to make a career for myself in my passion. And I think that one thing that I would like to add on to that with is that the teachers in this program are the kind of people who don't want you to just settle for the easy thing. They want you to dig into your passions and find what you really want to do with your life and make it your top priority instead of just putting it aside and being too scared. And that's something that Project Next really, really has focused on since day one, and that's why I've been super, super fortunate to be in this program for the last four years.
I am just one of about 15 teachers within Project Next, and I know I speak for all of us when I say how proud we are of this pioneer class. Hannah and Dominic represent a sample of what these students are capable of. In building a brand-new program, they have faced challenges, they have experienced success, and they have done all of that with grace. And none of that would be possible. We would not be up here without the support of a few groups of people, namely, our principal. Mr. Gregory has done nothing but believe in us, guide us, and trust us to do what we believe is best for kids. And, more importantly than him, our students have been with us for four years through all of that and have given us an incredible amount of support, and their families as well. And we are so grateful to them for believing in us. Thank you.
Thank you. We could only talk about this all night long, probably, so I'll be brief, but I, it seems like it was just yesterday when I sat there with John and said, "Can you imagine? Just, you could do this." And you said, "If I could start my own school." And we said, "You have a school."[1003.43][1003.43](laughing) And here we are. So, anyway, wonderful. Any other comments from the board on that?
Me again. You know, it's so fun, and I don't know if Dominic or Hannah was involved in this, but in the midst of the pandemic, we got an email saying, "Would you like to sit in?" And I don't remember the names. It was a group downtown, it might have been Degage, and they were looking to rethink their energy consumption, whether that be...
In the Image.
In the Image, thank you. Blading, whatever it was. And what was so fascinating, that is my background, I used to do energy audits. And so, to see the professionalism and accuracy with which this group really did conduct a spot-on energy audit, but they were listening, hearing about all those soft skills you're saying these kids were instilled in and that you two realize that you're getting yourselves, they kept hearing their customers' passion for the environment, so they determined what the carbon footprint was also of this move for them. So, it wasn't just, "How do we save money?", but "How do we listen to the people we're trying to help and really serve their needs and, you know, answer to their passions?" So, it was such a cool experience to be part of that, and again, you guys are going to go out and make the world a better place, too. So, thank you. Great report.
Yes. Anybody else? Wonderful. Yeah, it's, it was so exciting. I had forgotten about the mock interviews. I was just there because it seems like every time we turn around, there's some cool thing happening over there that we can't keep up with. So, that's a part that's near and dear to my heart, is career exploration. So, awesome.
Madam President, I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers. Thank you, Mrs. Irwin, for being here tonight. A huge thank you to Mr. Gregory, and certainly to our students. Dominic and Hannah, you are, and your peers, are really a trail-blazing group of students. It took a trail-blazing group of students and staff to build the facility that we're here and the program that we have here out of Goodwilly. And one of the things we've wanted to do is to figure out, how do we create a new verb called Goodwillyize? How do we Goodwillyize education? And make it so it's much more experiential, where you are learning things as you're doing them, and you're practicing, and you're iterating all the way through. And I know that was, I remember meeting with your peers, I believe when you were freshmen. It was about November, and this was not a surprise to me at the time, but students said, I'm paraphrasing, I don't know that this is exactly, you have to forgive my memory sometimes, but students were saying, "We just want a worksheet. We just want a paper that someone tells us how many pages it needs to be." Because those were the old models of school that we had that we're trying to sort of break in a positive way, if you will, and bring about this new dynamic. And the fact that you and your peers have persevered and stuck through all of that sort of deprogramming of the old way and coming back to something that I think is actually a much more authentic way that people learn, I'm just so appreciative of you for blazing that trail. And I believe this is going to be a program, it's maybe not for every student, but I think for so many students, it will be a program that truly is life-changing in such a positive way. So, thank you both for spending the time with us here. I know it's a huge time of year and a really busy time of year for you, but really, really appreciate it. And Sarah, please extend my thanks as well to all of your colleagues for all the hard work they've been putting into this program over the years as well. Great job.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we are going to move into the business portion of our meeting. So, the first thing I need is a motion to approve the consent grouping.
Madam President, I move we approve consent grouping, items 6A through C.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Superintendent Beam, is there anything you'd like to call out for our attention here?
I think our treasurer will speak to this, but just simply to say that as part of state law, I have also looked at the KISD budget for the general fund for 2022-2023 school year, and I don't see any concerns there. We had a presentation from their superintendent and chief financial officer, and that all looks very standard and customary according to me. That's it.
Okay. With that, I think we'll move right into our committee reports. So, why don't we start with you, Mrs. Gregory? Oh, we could, yeah. So, I guess we should, we do this separately or just in the...
It's part of the consent.
It's just part of the consent. Yeah, yeah. You're, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, now, that's another way. We have our normal payment of the bills that went through as a monthly. We have a couple of interesting things that come up, replacement of food equipment at our schools. Some of them are 20 to 40 years old, which is amazing that they've lasted that long. So, it is, as well, some digital screens for the students to get them more engaged in healthy foods and what's available. So, with our, we've sourced it out to purchasing co-op, and we have two different sources that we're going from. This is coming from the Food Service Fund. We have a balance that we can only keep three months, I believe, in there, and so we have an excess balance this year because a lot of the lunches were free through some programs of the federal government. So, we're spending the money wisely and replacing things that we're going to need for the long term. One of the vendors is $420,000, and the other one is $66,000. We also need approval for the IXL site licenses, which is the K through 6, that I'm sure curriculum, we'll talk a little bit more about this, but it's a three-year term, and this is paid through our ESSER equalization fund, too, and this is $368,000. This program, again, they're going to talk about it, but allows our students to be engaged where they need, where they're, let us meet them where they're at. So, it kind of, yeah.[1374.65][1374.65](laughing) I don't want to go a lot into it because I know they're going to. We have our AP Chemistry Replacement Books. This is a six-year online license, and this is from the general fund for $26,000. We also have some replacement of audio enhancement system over at Orchard View. We have, throughout the years, had multiple different, well, we've had one system, but multiple different breakdowns of this system. It's older, and so, as we have looking at our bond and our construction and everything we're doing, it's time for us to replace this system. So, we're starting with Orchard View as a beta test, again, just seeing, because they're having a lot of the construction right now, so we're going to see how this goes and how we like it. This will come from the capital fund, that's the 2021, that's for $43,000. As Superintendent Beam mentioned, we are also looking for approval on the KISD 2022 and 2023 general budget. And then lastly, is the property tax reimbursement from Kent County, which is $2,400, and as well, ESSER funds, I'm not going to go into that, but I think Mr. Beam was going to do that later. And that is it.
Any questions for Mrs. Gregory? All right. Well, then, I think we will have Maggie give us an update on curriculum.
Yeah. I'm going to split this update between myself and Ms. Covell, since she was able to be there this month, and she has some information to present to us about a presentation that we received from Central Woodlands about their Sutton's Bay experience. Do you want to go ahead and do it right now?
Sure. Go right ahead.
All right. So, this month, the curriculum committee got to enjoy a presentation from teacher Patty Tully and principal Amy Burton, majors of Central Woodlands 56 Building, on a project-based learning experience. Here we are talking about Project Next here, and here's where we can get things started at that fifth, sixth, we'll go all the way down, right? But this, this is another excellent example of project-based learning in schools, where they were able to take a couple classes of sixth graders up to Sutton's Bay for a real authentic learning experience. The kids were reportedly task-focused and joyful as they learned about biodiversity on Lake Michigan. But the story actually goes back to Patty had been awarded a grant to spend four days in immersive experience up there in Sutton's Bay, where the, the goal was inspire a lifetime of great lakes curiosity, stewardship, and passion, and she definitely pulled on that one. And what they had also requested was that every teacher who was a part of this experience had to bring a class back to Sutton's Bay so that students could learn about this as well. But Patty, very clever, finagled a way to bring two classes worth of students, which not only increased the number of students here who could do that, but it made it quite relatively inexpensive for all these students to attend that field trip. So, the experience was transformative for students. They got to handle invasive species personally, to really be able to identify those. They got to take a schooner ride and even captain the schooner. They used microplastics collectors as they were taking care of the water. But the best part, the project part here, is that they built remote-operated vehicles, which they then tested by collecting items on the surface and even submerged items with their own created vehicles. So, this is precisely what educators would refer to as sticky learning. This is something that's going to stay with them for a lifetime, an experience that really will bring it home what education's about, but also connect it to their environment and community. And then, not only did they do that, but when they got back to Central Woodlands, they created presentations for classmates on invasive species. So, I mean, the learning continued on beyond that field trip. Also notable is Tully and her students' Sutton Bay experience was recently featured on the School News Network, which was a well-deserved honor, in my opinion, that showcases Patty's and Amy's support in bringing such an amazing learning experience to our kids. I've got to say, bravo, ladies. Those kids are going to remember that authentic learning experience forever.
Thank you. That sounds really cool.
It was. You missed it.
I did. And then, just after that, we just had a few business items. One was to review the Scholastic Summer Reading Program for our K3 kids at Adivista. This is going to replace for them the kids read now, since that does not come in Spanish. So, this program will be for our Spanish immersion students through Scholastic. And then, also discussed was the renewal of CommonLit.org, also district funding of the IXL program, as Nicole mentioned, for our K12 students. And that is a computer-based math or language arts practice that very much mimics how students are going to be assessed on the MAP test. So, it's a good practice for them. And so, and then additionally, a 30-day review of an advanced placement textbook for AP Chemistry with a six-year digital license from Cengage. Cengage, is that how you say it? Yeah. Yeah. And that was it for curriculum this month.
Excellent. That, see, I would say this is the boring business part of the meeting, but this was really good. Yeah, this, yes, good. Any questions for either of our committees? Did we miss anything? Yeah, that was fantastic. Yes. Another person may have to write a note. Wow, too, right? Awesome, awesome. Just write the notes to the teacher. Yes, yes, absolutely. Okay. All right. Well, with that, I think we are ready for a roll-call vote on our consent grouping. Mr. Michaud.
Yes.
Dr. Fawson.
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon.
Yes.
Ms. Covell, yes. And Mrs. Callahan. Yes. All right. Thank you. And with that, I think we will turn it over. I won't skip your report this time.
All right. That's no problem.
Thank you. Thank you to Goodwilly tonight for hosting us. Thank you, Mr. Yeldin. Thank you Scott and Beth and Megan and Brent. It's great to be here tonight and all the things that take place out here at Goodwilly, especially all throughout the year. But at this time of the year, lots of things happening and lots of excitement. So thanks for having us here tonight. Really appreciate that. I want to say a few words on where we are as a district with our application for the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, known as ESER III. And it was about the middle of March that the state of Michigan released the application for districts to submit for their use of ESER III dollars. And these applications have a 90-day period in which we can submit them. So it's due about the middle of June, but we anticipate having, turning in the application before that, possibly the end of this month here in May. And I just want to remind everyone that we are looking at the standard formula fund that the federal government came up with that provides Forest Hills Public Schools with a one-time allocation of just over $2 million to be used from the time period that we receive the funds here, hopefully in the summer of 2022, through September 30th of 2024. 20% of those funds, according to the federal rule, have to be spent at a minimum to address learning loss. And I would propose that we'll have all of our funds really going to address learning loss on that. That's really the main purpose of the use of these funds. But in addition to the federal formula, which was based on a community's poverty index, Michigan and lawmakers in Michigan also came up with a different way to distribute these dollars, a second bucket, if you will, and that's the equalization bucket. And the equalization bucket was designed to really smooth out some large disparities between school districts across the state on the disbursement of these federal funds. This additional equalization formula needed special federal approval because it wasn't part of the original federal plan. And after some back and forth between the Michigan Department of Education and the United States Department of Education, Michigan's plan was approved. And again, each of the 50 states needs to have their individual state plan approved by the U.S. Department of Education. It was just ours was a little bit different than sort of the boilerplate federal plan that was put forward. This allocation has eight and a half million dollars of one-time monies to be spent between now and September 30th, 2024. And this needs to be spent in a targeted way for students who suffered the greatest effects of the pandemic in terms of academic learning loss. In fact, by rule, at least 51.4% of these funds, or $4.37 million, needs to be addressing learning loss. At least 10.3% or $876,000 needs to be spent on summer programming, and at least 10.3% or $876,000 needs to be spent on after-school programs. I just want to talk a little bit more about our plan for use of these dollars in both the formula and equalization pots on this. Again, what we're looking to do is to disperse these monies as soon as possible to do two things, to either expand the time that we can provide instruction for our students, so additional instructional time, or to have additional instructors, additional educators come in and work with students. So we can close any of those gaps that may have resulted from the pandemic. And some things that we are going to do with these dollars. We are going to continue with the use of early elementary surge aids. We use these with our ESER II dollars. And what these folks are, are additional people that come into our, especially our kindergarten and first grade classrooms. And these are helping students, many of which did not hit the same developmental milestones because of the pandemic pre-kindergarten. Oftentimes, students will have pre-kindergarten experiences, preschool, other things, and the like, and they're able to hit all sorts of developmental milestones in the academic area and the social realm. And what we see with many of our students at these early grade levels is they're behind on those milestones. So what this does is allow us to address those gaps and also make sure that academic learning isn't delayed because the teacher's helping a student tie their shoe, get their boots on for going outside in the winter, all those other things that may take the teacher away from the work of instructing students on that. So these elementary surge aids help with non-academic tasks that some of these youngest students may need some help with, but they also help with academic tasks. When they've addressed those non-academic needs, they're also able to push into the classroom in that way as well. We've had great feedback from our kindergarten and first grade teachers on the assistance that these early elementary surge aids have provided. Another piece along this line of some gaps that have developed with students before they even came to us is in the area of reading. So what we're looking to do is to provide more decodable books for students. These are books which help a student's confidence and fluency in reading. They can have a variety of, a rhyming scheme, a rhythmic scheme to them, as students are learning different word sounds and the like, and they're building their own confidence, and they're identifying themselves as a reader. That's a really important thing as we look at the research, is a student sees success, and success builds more success in students as they're having that sense of efficacy going through. We talked about tonight, the IXL program. That's an adaptive, computer-aided program that students K-12 can use anywhere. They can use it anywhere. They can have a computer connection in at any time, in the summertime, after school, on the weekends, whatever it may be. They can use it for remediation, for extra practice, or enrichment, if they want to move forward as well. So that's a great thing that this program brings to all of our families. Another piece that we're looking at is, we heard from principals, we heard from teachers, we heard from students as well, and parents, about the need for additional support in the area of math, especially at the secondary level. Secondary math standards are more rigorous than when I was in high school, that's for certain. And they are a high bar that students need to get over. And what we need simply is, for some students, it's just more time, and for some of our teachers, it's additional assistance. And we've seen this in different ways, whether it's after-school support, where we can have certified teachers that can be there to help our students, or sometimes what we've seen is students working with their teacher to provide peer tutoring, even during lunchtime. Kids bring in their lunch, and they'll help with a little bit more instruction on the day's lesson. We know the best time to address a gap is as soon as it opens. So the earlier we can be in addressing the gap, the more successful we will be in closing that gap. This may also be additional math teachers that we have that can push into classrooms, and more hands make lighter work in this area. So that's something that we're looking at in a variety of different configurations at our secondary level. The pandemic had some of the biggest impacts in terms of gaps in learning for students with disabilities. And what we want to be able to do here is to make sure our special education programs have the resources that they need, to make sure that students who have an individualized education plan and are moving towards their diploma, that they have all of the resources they need to accommodate whatever their disability may be. That's a requirement of longstanding federal law. And what we want to make sure is that all of our teachers have what it is that they need as well. As we see here, we bring in curricular enhancements to all of our content areas, especially our core content areas. And oftentimes, our special education, say, resource room teachers, they need to choose, am I going to go with the science or the math professional learning that's happening today? We want to circle back and make sure that we're meeting all those needs that our teachers have and making sure they have all the curricular resources that they need. As well, we have some students that the nature of the disability that they have is they may need different curricular resources to better meet them where they are. And some of our students that are on an attendance completion track for life skills they have to transition into the world of work as well. So there are additional dollars set aside to address those needs as we go forward. One of the things we heard from all stakeholder groups was the need for additional counseling services, and we're looking to provide that at several of our schools. In addition to implementation coordinators for our positive behavioral system that we have in the district and are enhancing next year to reinforce those positive behaviors that we're looking to see from all students, and also our multi-tiered systems of support, this is both in the academic realm and the behavioral realm, where we have additional folks who can help with that. So this can take on many different forms, but students that, again, need some extra help at any level, say with a content area that day, having an extra set of hands there that can intervene while the teacher can continue with a larger group of students, and an MTS aid can work with a smaller group of students, that works very well, as well as a student that maybe behaviorally, there's something going on. And otherwise, the teacher would have to stop instruction, address whatever that behavior is. This MTS aid would be able to work with that student, re-ground them, get them back into a learning zone, if that's the appropriate thing, to respond to that behavior, and continue on with learning going forward with that. Speaking of learning, one of the ways that we can take these dollars and have them extend beyond the useful life of these dollars is to add to the toolboxes of our educators. So professional learning is a way to do that. As we do continued professional learning in all of our content areas, this is a way to make sure that we are supporting that work going forward for the next couple of years as well. But as teachers take on, say, we're talking about project-based learning, how we take these multiple content standards and group them together in a multidisciplinary, integrated way, that takes some professional learning. And we've got some teachers that know how to do that, that could teach that to other teachers. That takes time to do that, and those take resources. And so that's where we can transfer that knowledge and skill and have that last well beyond the fall of 2024. And again, as I talked about, summer programming for the next three summers, that's the summer of 2022, 2023, and 2024, certainly in the area of remediation and closing gaps, but also enrichment as well, as well as extended school year programs for students with disabilities. And then also after-school programming in the next two school years, 2022-23 and 23-24 school year. We are still working through the final details on all of this. That's the budget for each of these things that I've talked about, and also making sure that the way in which we are looking to configure these programs actually meets the need at the building level. So the secondary math intervention, for example, may look one way at one of our buildings that that best meets the needs that we see, and it may look slightly different or have an added feature at another building. So we're working through with our principals on that to make sure that we have all of those elements in place. We will post all of the areas that we are looking to spend these dollars, as well as the budget that goes along with that, to our website. And again, we anticipate that will be at the end of this month, certainly by the deadline that we need to turn this in the middle of June. So that's a little update on ESER III and where we are with that. I also want to talk about the state budget. The state budget is moving forward. In Lansing, we now have three different proposals, one from the executive branch, and one from the Michigan House, and the other one from the Michigan Senate. So those three proposals are out in public at this point in time. All three of those proposals proposes increases in K-12 funding and increases of the level that we've not seen in probably a couple of decades, I would say. It's around a 5% range of the increases that we're seeing. It's not finalized yet. They still need to assess the total revenue that they predict will be available for the next 12-month fiscal year cycle that begins October 1st. But lawmakers are coming together to do this, and we have settled employee contracts for the current school year and the next school year. But as we look at the price of all sorts of things, what we'd like to do is to come to our employee groups and look to enhance the settlements that the district made a year ago with most of these groups, with a two-year contract extension that we did about 12 months ago, around this time. We did that for the current school year and the next school year. What we'd like to do is to take that second year of the contract, which is next school year, the 2022-23 school year, and bring some enhancements forward to that. So our district cabinet team has been meeting with the various employee groups to bring those enhancements forward and to make sure that, again, we're investing those dollars back in with our staff. We're not a bank, and we need to make sure that we're meeting the needs out there of our staff. And this goes after really a decade-plus of what I would call under-investment in K-12 education. And our staff know, our community know, that we have been having to remove positions and tighten our budget really through attrition. And we want to add some of those positions back, but also look at those contractual enhancements as well as we go forward. Finally, the last thing, I would just say thank you to our community for all that they have been doing to express their appreciation to our staff. We had Educator Appreciation Week across the nation last week, and boy, the expressions of appreciation came in in bucketfuls, and we are so, so grateful for that. That puts an extra sort of wind in everyone's sails, and that's helpful certainly at this time of the year, and greatly appreciated by all. So thanks to our community for that. That's all I have for my report tonight, Madam President.
Fantastic. That was great. Any questions from the board on that report? Comprehensive?
I just want to say thank you. I mean, it's a lot of time and energy. It's a lot of information coming at everyone at one time. I know we're going to be communicating that on the website. And thank you, Julie. I know you were very hard on this, making sure our budgets are balanced, and the ESER funds are not easy. It's very specific about the way we have to request them and get the monies back. So, and it's all for the, you know, for the good of the district and the students. I appreciate all of the work you're doing there.
Yes, and we've been asking those questions all along, saying, you know, from the first day we heard about this, we said, okay, wait a second. What are we doing that's going to reap the longest reward for our students? And where we're addressing the learning loss, but I think that we're putting in place the resources that will catch up and allow everybody to thrive. So investing in all the stakeholders. So, good. Any other comments? Okay, all right. Well, at this time, we will move into board communications. So I will open it up over here first. Anything that you would like to share with the board?
I can share a foundation report.
Sure.
I know that we were all at the luncheon last Thursday, along with about 350 other people, a lot of community members, teachers, administration, students. It was, it was my first luncheon, and it was really inspiring. I loved being there. I loved hearing from all the kids. The theme was being unlimited opportunities and limitless possibilities for our students. So there was obviously a focus on middle school students, and we heard about projects in our middle schools specifically. So things like Project Lead the Way, and book clubs, and a partnership program between the PTO and the foundation for robotics classes, some choir performances from the Central Woodlands Choir. And then we also got to hear excerpts from the winning What Is Community to Me contest winners. And that included both essay entries as well as art entries. And those were really, that was great to hear, too. And I think, I just want to say, too, this was Elizabeth Brink's, the new foundation director's first luncheon, and she did an amazing job. It was so intentional. It was so well thought out. It was so inspiring. And there are quite a few pictures from the luncheon on the foundation's Facebook page, if anyone wants to see those. Additionally, the foundation is hosting a PTO brunch next Thursday, May 19th, at the FAC. And so PTO executive boards have been invited to that. They want to thank the PTOs for all that they do for the district, and they also want to bring PTO members together to be able to kind of share best practices and, and share ideas. And then the annual Charlie Anderson Memorial Golf Tournament is June 21st at Thorny Apple Point. They, their slogan is "Join the Foundation as They Tee It Up for Education." And you can find out more information about that if you're interested in playing in the scramble at fhp sf.org. And they also actually have their own separate website for the golf outing, so fhp sf golf dot org. And that is the foundation.
Excellent. I will say ditto to all of that. It was a great lunch, and we had a nice variety of people at my table. I made sure I had people that didn't all know each other come and sit at my table, so I think that was good. Any other board communications from this side of the room?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Had the pleasure of attending the district's first Transportation Task Force meeting last Thursday. And I just have to say, we're celebrating experiential learning, and Julie's last Thursday, and I just have to say, we're celebrating experiential learning, and Julie's agenda and the way that that was put together was a showcase for collaboration, communication, creative problem-solving. It's a group composed of transportation personnel, supervisor, you know, bus drivers, everything, parents of children all over the district. So whether you're elementary or high school, whatever age you may be, eastern, northern, I almost said southern, central. Yeah, and it was impressive, the creativity, and it was another cool example of guiding principles, like how do we pull together and work together to make this the best it can be for everybody? It was a fantastic meeting. I know there's another one scheduled, and I'm very grateful we were able to sit in and be a fly on a wall and see how that magic worked. So thank you. Also, it is the season in our world of superintendent's evaluation, and by law, we have to submit a efficiency rating based on some evidence provided by Dan and some criteria. We use the Marzano Evaluation Tool, which is one approved by the state, and that has to be done by June 30th. I'm looking at CJ because we are supposed to all receive training on that. So I'm hoping I talked to the person that trained a few of us years ago will connect with you. And since some of us at the table have had a whole board tenure involved and immersed in a pandemic and other crazy activities, might connect with you guys and see if you want a little refresher, okay? Talked to Pamela Fieri. She's the person that trained us, and she's all willing to support and just make sure we all understand how to implement that and make sure we understand the, you know, importance of that duty in our, you know, board service. Okay? Oh, one more. Apparently, I'm into an evaluation mood because MASP, the state approves a number of tools based on a bunch of criteria that we can use, and MASP has one, too. And I have a bit of a bias, but I'm not sure that Marzano really truly gives our superintendent the opportunity to accurately and adequately highlight all the work he does. So I sat on a training. It was very impressive, very cool. Before we did Marzano back in 16 and 17, Dan would take a lot of time and highlight seven categories that epitomized education: academia, community, communication, finance, whatever. And this might give us a chance to revisit some of those things again. So group decision, but I will send you the link if you'd like to look at the tool, very similar, but just, you know, chat about that a little bit when we get together and see what best serves our superintendent and our group and our district. Okay? Thanks.
Excellent. Anything else over here? All right. Any other board communications you want to share? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn. Thank you, Mrs. Tryon. These are all great updates, and that does lead into some of our, it is that busy time of year, or there's a lot of things that we have that we're doing before we wrap up the, the school year in the next month or so. Our next big meeting will be lots of celebrations, for sure, at the Fine Arts Center. All right. Well, if there are no other board communications, we are going to move into public comments. So at this time, if anybody would like to address the board, you can do so. We will, there's probably up there, and I know Val has provided these before, but I'll just, I won't read all of the, the rules, but we would like for you to come up, address the board, and please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. And the other thing that I did want to start out with here, we, all of our meetings, we try to do all of our updates, and you can tell there's a lot of business that was done this evening. All of the comments that come in here, we've talked about. Busing is an example. Over the years, we've been working on it. We haven't been, Julie has been working on that with her team throughout the year, providing updates to us. So when people bring in concerns to us, it's not falling on deaf ears. All this is directed, the comments come in, and we direct it to the right person in the district that actually can address an issue. The issues are always best addressed by the person closest to it. We're very supportive, but we're the most removed from the actual issue, but we definitely make sure that they get directed. So with that, if anybody would like to make public comments, please come up, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes. We're happy to hear from you. Thank you.
My name is Fay Myers, and I live at 2836 Jonathan Court Northeast. I have lived in this district for 53 years, and in my 53 years, I have voted in favor of every request for money to support our schools. I have four adult children who all went through Orchard View and then onto Forest Hills Northern. I have 11 grandchildren, of which six went through Atevista and then onto Forest Hills Northern. I am here tonight to discuss our athletic facilities at Forest Hills Northern. They leave much to be desired and are unsafe. Our football stadium is an accident waiting to happen, especially if you have any kind of handicap. I broke my ankle last August, and it made me see things very, in a very different way. Walkways in and out need to be completely redone, potholes, patches, and it is simply not safe. Stands need to have center rails added. Have you ever watched an older person or someone who struggles walking try to go down the aisle to find a seat? Also, I do not want to be told that they didn't do handrails when the field was built. They need to be added now. Lighting down the path from the tennis courts down, then up from the bottom lot, the lighting and the walkways, they, to the stands, leading from the lower lot to the stands by the press box, it is dark and dangerous. I can attest to that because when I broke my ankle. Now, we're going to switch into the gym. They do have center aisles rails in the gym, but they need to be fixed. They're very wobbly, and the lighting is terrible. And I don't want to be told money is short. Unacceptable. There is a fund called the General Fund, and it seems like there's plenty there. This needs to be put on the top of the list to be taken care of. I would like to see it be completed by fall. You get senior citizens' cards for free entry to all sporting events. Let's make improvement stat and make it a good experience for all. In closing, we used to be the premier district in Kent County, yet now our facilities don't hold a candle, some of them, to, to the others sporting facilities that are more high art schools in the area, which is really unfortunate. I'm really serious. This is a bad situation up at Northern. And if you've ever watched, I've watched an older lady come in last year or two, I just happened to see her at two of the football games, and I could watch her, and she was going to fall. There's nothing to hold. She walked down. Two uncles of one of the football players, one was severely wounded. Oops, I'm, but it was very scary. So this is not a, something to shelve. It needs to be worked on.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Lee, and I'm a resident in Forest Hills. There's a lot of wonderful things in Forest Hills. This building is one of them. It's been prized to many people and many students that go into it. We have an Atev, yes?
We can't hear you.
Yeah. We have a Spanish immersion. We have a lot of language programs that are wonderful. But there's a darker side to Forest Hills that's taken root. I need to address who we are and what we represent. Who is Forest Hills for Just Education? We are an organization to bring our schools back to neutral ground, free of bias, to rid our district of the ideology of CRT and its teachings through social learning programs. These programs create intentional division in our community where there was none before. Along with the journey, we first saw firsthand the absence of transparency by the board and the failure to solve the busing problems, which you now, after one year of talking about it, we're finally getting somewhere. What are the motives of each board member? Only you are to know. If your motives were to remove the valedictorian and salutatorian status in our district, then you can check that box. If your school board, if, if each school board member's motives were to divide the community, you can check that box, too. If each school board member motivates, motives were to allow chaos in our transportation department, then double-check. If each school board member's motives were to shelter in the LGBT community and put forth their ideology, then you can check that box as well. If these were not your motives, then it's sheer incompetence on your part. You continue to fail to listen to our organization and listen to others, and you listen to others who have a different agenda for education. You further spread a misinformation to protect your own positions by aligning with support at FHPS and divide the community even further. We ask each of you to resign immediately and put this district first, and let's get back to this business of educating our students.
I'm, live at 1441 Sandy Point Ave. Been part of the district since 1987. My kids graduated now many years ago, and it was a good experience, and I've always been proud of the, the school system and, and the district. And however, you know, over the last few months, I've heard some very disturbing things, seen some very disturbing things, that even though I don't have kids or grandkids, I'm a taxpayer and, and have concerns over them. And I really hadn't planned to make any comments. I mean, quite honestly, this is literally the first school board meeting I have ever attended. But two things came up in the meeting tonight that I really wanted to kind of point out, and one of them was the, I'm glad to see that there's attention on being paid to learning that was, was disrupted and so forth. And I guess one of the comments I would make is that, Mr. Beam, you took the most extreme positions on masks and distancing and closing of schools that you possibly could, and perhaps we would not have the, the, the problems with learning gaps today if, if you had been more flexible at that point when the evidence was there to do so. And then secondly, as far as the transportation, again, I don't have kids in school, but I certainly have heard the stories about the buses from all different people, I mean, neighbors, friends, people with grandchildren and so forth. And I was quite stunned to hear all the accolades and discussion tonight about a meeting that took place, I think you said last week, for the first time, and how wonderful and magical it was when this problem has been going on for literally at least the school year, if not before. So it really disappointed me to hear that suddenly this magical meeting, it took so long that it took place, because it, there seems to me there's absolutely no excuse for it. So thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Katie Newville. It's nice to be able to see you all and see that you're people and that I'm a person. Thank you. I, I had a rush here. My daughter woke up this morning. She goes to this amazing school. Mr. Beam, I heard you say something, you addressed the students that were here. You said something about how we're, we need to change and move into the new and all the stuff, and I, I just, the thing about this school that is amazing is the tradition and the family, and they bring back some of the same really cool people every year. My husband, his son is 24, he went here. He just graduated from U of M. He got my daughter excited to come here, and she's doing the same things that he did. It, it's the tradition. It's amazing. I'm repeating myself. I am socially anxiety person. Thank you for having patience. She woke up this morning at 3:00 AM and had a bloody nose. That's not typical for her, and it didn't stop. It's been going all day, and it really scared me. And I just took her to the ER. They're amazing, the Helen DeVos ER is awesome. And we got out at 6:15, and I was like, oh, I can make it to this meeting. I don't understand why you guys can't live broadcast this meeting. I shouldn't. I've asked, I've sent, I've talked to the tech guy. He seems like a great, very well, he knows what he's doing, but he said it would take tens of thousands of dollars. I used to work at a recording studio. That's not accurate. There's a way to do it with a laptop. You could set it by a speaker. It doesn't have to be hard. I don't want to be here. I'm sorry. Like, I do want to be here. I want to support this board. I want to know what's going on. When somebody in my neighborhood says something about the school, like, do you know what's going on with the busing? Or do you, I want to be like, I saw the meeting. I know what they're up to. Some of it's awesome. I'm proud of some of the things that are going on in this district. I want to attend, but I, it's weird that in 2022, we're not live broadcasting these meetings. I mean, I feel like five-year-olds know how to do it now. We all learned how to do it over COVID. We had to. Why aren't we doing it? It started to make me feel like there's some kind of weird thing with transparency. I never wanted to think that, but then I came to the last meeting, and it's like, we've got the technology. I know we can do it. Why aren't we live broadcasting this? And then I, I said something to the tech guy, the tech gentleman, I don't remember what his name is, I'm sorry. I said something about how I know there's other parents that would watch it. They'd watch a live stream. I feel like that's supportive to you. Maybe I'm wrong. If you don't want that support, I don't understand. He said, there isn't interest. That interest doesn't exist. I'm the interest. I'm here. I would love to be sitting at home with my daughter right now while listening to this with some headphones. I don't think that's crazy. I think that's so normal now. And that, that's it. That's really all I wanted to say. And, and I came here, and I just, I miss my daughter, and she goes to the school, and the school's amazing. And thank you to all the people who work here, if anyone's still here. Anyway, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jared. After our meeting, month after month, I'm okay being on a first-name basis. Actually, considering how one of your star students was motivated to stalk, harass, terrorize Stephanie Boone, her family, and others, anonymity sounds like a pretty good idea here. Regardless, I'd like to recap some of the serious concerns we've expressed. First, denial CRT is not part of your programs were proven deceptive at best. There's a ton of evidence that CRT dogma is discreetly but all too effectively woven into social, emotional learning programs. And for God's sakes, I know mixed-race kids who attack their white relatives as racist, all saying, we learn that at school from our teachers. We know academic performance has declined and scholastic metrics have been dumbed down. Your eliminating valedictorian and salutatorian achievements are symptomatic. Our district's ranking review ratings have plummeted, and while population keeps increasing, enrollments keep dropping, all while private and homeschooling are increasing dramatically. But this district is among the very top of the class with its outrageous number of bus route cancellations. And we now know so much of what is so wrong with our public schools began with John Dewey, the renowned founding father of America's public school system. This system, he was a fan of, envied Communist Russia's government school methods of indoctrination. He infamously said, propaganda is education, but it must be the right propaganda, Dewey's social, ethical learning. He was an avowed atheist and an academic elitist with a Marxist bent who wrote repeatedly and knew, as did his hero, Joseph Stalin, that faith and family loyalties were obstacles to controlling us, America's un-woke peasants. And so here we are. After several generations of academic elitist Dewey acolytes charting the course of schools of higher education, today's public school woke programs have finally made Dewey's twisted dreams of true eroding faith and traditional family values in K through 12. This poster is just a tiny sampling of the guidance materials found in our libraries, and it's just the tip of the tip of the tip of the iceberg into which our public schools are sailing, crashing our children, our country, our traditional values. For God's sakes, we must turn this ship around. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nick Prill. Haven't talked to you guys in a couple of months. The reason I haven't talked to you guys in a couple of months is because I, I actually prefer to comment on things that you guys are going to be voting on. Having public comment before you guys vote on something gives your constituents the chance to share their concerns, their feedback beforehand. However, you guys have moved public comment to the end of the meeting. Now, there was no discussion about it. There was no vote on that. And more importantly, none of you guys have commented on it in the public space. So that leaves me to one conclusion. You guys behind closed doors collectively agreed to move public You guys behind closed doors collectively agreed to move public comment to the end of the meeting, which would be a violation of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Now, you say you care about what we have to say, but pushing public comment to the end of the meeting does not say that, Ms. Callahan. Many school boards, many public bodies, I can appreciate that maybe you wanted to move the bulk of public comment later in the meeting to try and allow for those that are here for the business portion to get through that. Other public bodies that do that, they have two public comment sessions. One at the beginning of the meeting so that people can comment on the agenda items before you guys vote on them, and one for general items at the end of the meeting. So if you really care what we have to say, I expect that on the June meeting, we will either see the entire public comment moved back up, or we will see it split. Otherwise, I guess we know our answer. You don't really care.
My information's on file with the sheriffs. Following up on Nick's comments, actually, you guys voted on IXL approval, right? In this meeting tonight, without any comment from the public, but if you look at independent reviews of IXL, while the program is nice, there are serious safety concerns. The terms IXL says users can interact with trusted users on the service, but do not disclose whether a child or student's personal information can be displayed publicly in any way. The terms say a school may elect to provide usernames or identifiers for student users which are not readily available or identifiable to anyone outside the school community in substitution of full student name. In addition, a school may elect to provide a profile name for a child user and selection of a profile avatar. IXL's terms say they recommend that the parent selects a profile name that does not include the real name or identifying characteristics of the child. The parent may also create a secret word, which functions similar to a password, to access the child profile, although it cannot be used to sign into the IXL service without the parent's first signing into the parent's account using the parent's login credentials. However, parents and teachers should be aware that the terms say a child may change his or her profile avatar, secret word, or profile name, but the parent will see these changes through the parent's account dashboard. IXL's terms say the account dashboard ensures the parents have access to and control of their child's use of the service. In terms of privacy, IXL's terms say the type of personal information the service collects may vary depending on the account type. I didn't hear what type of account type has been purchased here. Family account is purchased by or for a parent. A family account typically includes child profiles that can be used by a parent's child at the parent's direction. I would highly recommend that. A classroom account is purchased by or on behalf of a school, such as by a teacher, and is a type of school account. Classroom account typically includes a single teacher user and a small number of student users. A site account is purchased by or on behalf of an entire school district. Site account typically includes an unlimited number of teacher users and a set maximum number of student users. In addition, the terms state that IXL takes specific precautions to collect only as much information as is reasonably necessary for a child to use the service. The terms of IXL say they may share information with third parties with consent and at the direction of schools and parents. In addition, third-party service providers who have access to student data are contractually bound to uphold privacy and confidentially terms no less protective than IXL's terms. IXL's terms also say they consider student data to be strictly confidential and in general do not use student data for any purpose other than improving and providing the services to the school or on the school's behalf. The terms say IXL will never sell student data to a third parties, but the terms do say that IXL may sell data from school or parent users to third parties. Highly recommend that you sign up for parent accounts. Thank you.
I'm Michael Glass, 29-years teacher at Forest Hills Public Schools. I've had some of your kids in my schools. I have, my daughter has graduated from Forest Hills Eastern in 2016. I want to thank you. In this year and the last three years, it's been tough, but I want to say thank you because this is my last year. I started in 93 at Forest Hills Northern under probably the best principals I've ever had, Gloria Graber, followed by Ann Enziga, then Margie Follinger, Scott Hade, who I think is still here somewhere, and now Kristen Schuko. It's been a blessing. My daughter went through my school with me. I got to drive her to school every day in the middle, elementary in Nap Forest. She went from Forest Hills Eastern Middle, then Forest Hills High, and is now graduated from Central Michigan and has a job in Detroit, all because of the things she was taught here in Forest Hills. I know we're getting beat up on things that seem crazy. Stay the course. You're doing a great job. I have done, I've not even taught here, I moved my family here. We were in Kentwood until she was five, and then we came over to the kindergarten and we've been in Forest Hills ever since. We live on the central side of the district. I, you know, it's been a blessing. I see all points and facets with all my neighbors from different groups. I've taught your school. I've taught the things that they're talking about. It works. Kids from Nap Forest grow. Kids in Nap Forest care. You saw a great presentation last time from Cindy Reynolds. She is fantastic. Keep it up. It is worth it for the kids. It was worth it for my daughter. She was able to find help at Central Michigan when she needed it because of the things she found here. It works. So believe in it, understand it. If anybody wants to talk to me about it, I've got 29 years invested in Forest Hills, 32 years in education, and it's just time for me to go. It's not because I'm tired, I'm mad, I'm not angry. It's just time. My wife graduate, or retired last year from another school district, and it's just my time now to find something else. Maybe back in Forest Hills later on, who knows? But I want to say thank you. I want to thank everybody who's had a part of my getting here. Dan Beam and Dr. Washburn, two of the best superintendents you're going to find in the state of Michigan. I don't care what you say. They have the legislature's ear. They know what they're doing. Follow them. Stay away from guns. Do your job. Thank you.
This presentation is rated X. There's sexual assault, profanity, and racist and derogatory commentary. All children are advised to leave at this, actually should leave at this time, and parents owe weak constitution as well. I'm here to give a report on the state of the review policy. Currently, parents are being discouraged from using it until they have talked to their school principal first. This potentially delays the official process from actually happening. Additionally, on the FHPS website, I will note that there is an article on the Protect Michigan Child Registry that does protect our children from external influence. Bravo. However, on this page, the book review form to protect our children from internal age inappropriate influences remains buried. It is in the board book, still stuck in section 5407F. There is still no link to the main page or any official push for policy awareness. Therefore, this book is called People Kill People by Alan Hopkins. As you can see from the sticker, or the stamp, rather, this is available in Forest Hills Public Schools at Central High, two copies at Northern High, one copy at Eastern Middle and High School, meaning that this is accessible to children as young as 12 without parental permission. This book is a fiction. It is not a history book. It is not a historical fiction book and displays horrible inappropriate behavior, like Islamophobia, Like antisemitism, page 59. Prostitution, they've got it covered on page 124. Misogyny and rape, in this case of a child. And this is the sanitized, tame passages in this book. I have stated each time, I do not support book bans, but this book clearly belongs in a public library and not in a school library where a 12-year-old can access it without parental permission or guidance. More awareness needs to be brought to the book review program. Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Doyle, longtime member of the community. I think you know where I live, spoken several times. I just, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but being here in this school has reminded me, and hearing about Project Next, has reminded me why I started driving a bus eight months ago. This school, this school district, and the courage that it takes to lead, as you all have, I want to thank you. To the members of the community, I would ask that we come together, we find solutions to problems, not simply identify them, that we seek to build, not to tear about, tear apart, and destroy. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Snyder. I'm a parent of two children, two children in the district. I have been a substitute teacher in the district. I'm currently a science teacher in a neighboring district. And I would like to just say, thank you for what you have done as a board to support our district. Thank you Superintendent Beam for sharing tonight how you choose to reinvest into our district and pour into our educators. I know that currently morale is very low for educators and they need our support. And I'm very thankful for the educators my children have had. And it is disappointing that there has been disruption in our district that doesn't contribute towards unity. And we need to encourage our educators and support them. And I just thank all of you for what you've done. And also thank you to Paul Doyle, my child's bus driver, who has stepped in this year. And he brings joy to our daughter every day, and I know he has sacrificed a lot. So I thank you, Paul. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments?
Hi, Elizabeth. I have two parents, two children in Forest Hills Public Schools. They're currently in Forest Hills Public Schools, and I live in Forest Hills Public Schools. I hadn't planned to speak this evening, but as we draw to a close of this school year, I wanted to say thank you so much to all of our amazing teachers here. We picked Forest Hills Schools when we moved, and I know we haven't gone wrong with the opportunities our kids have here. I grew up in a very small district and the things my kids have is just incomparable to what I grew up with. I'm amazed at the opportunities they have here. When our district is rated one of the top ones in the state, I know we picked correctly. And I want to thank all of our teachers. My boys both had really, really excellent years. And it's not that they haven't had good years before, they really have. But this year has just been really, really outstanding for both of them. And I'm so thankful for the teachers that they've had. One in middle school who has, you know, an array of teachers. And every single one of them has just been really, really great. And I'm so thankful for that. I have a middle schooler who comes home really happy, and he wants to talk to me about his day. And I have teachers who engage with me, and they respond to me when I email. They say thanks when I do stuff because I know our teachers just don't get enough these days. And as a teacher's kid, as a grandchild of teachers, my grandfather had more degrees, I think, than you could count. I really, really appreciate what it is our educators do, what they put up with every day from so many different at facets, and just really how amazing these people in Forest Hills are, and how thankful we are for them, especially just after the way the last couple of years have been. And thank you all too for your continued support of them.
Any more comment?
I want to share some of the sentiments that I heard in the last two speakers. It does, it takes courage to get up here and face everybody, you know, and to, and to hear feedback, whether it's good or bad. One of the things, one of the concerns I see is the divide. It's still out there. You know, I heard one person talk about unity, and it is impossible to have unity when ideologies differ so deeply, okay? We really need to consider neutrality when we're talking about issues of morality, right? Religion. I mean, we have a bunch of different religions out there. I think in a book that was read just earlier, there was some very terrible things said about other religions, you know, some antisemitic sentiments, some Islamophobic sentiments in a book that kids are, you know, have access to. Morality is something that is deeply held within families. We, I being a Christian, right, I want to raise my children and did raise my children in a home that was, that held to those beliefs, okay? I respect those who don't want to do that. I respect that their deeply held beliefs are honored. I, I think the problem we're seeing is that one side is being held in a different light while the other side is being suppressed. I know as a Christian, our moral views are not considered in the public square. We struggle with that when we're, you know, speaking to people. And I see some of those same views in other religions squelched in the public square as well. That's why when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, you know, first of all, equity is a Marxist term, but diversity means tolerance for all of those views. And we can't teach one above the other, and we must be neutral about it. And we must respect those different views in the classroom as educators, as, as supporting, administration supporting the educators. My point that I want to really emphasize is, is that there's one side of the story that's, or one side of the aisle, I guess, or ideological, or ideological divide that's getting all of, all of their wishes fulfilled through the school system and one side that's not. And I think we need to take that away, and I think we need to become neutral. Teach them as if they all exist and they're all welcome, and, and give them, and give each and every person with a different ideological view the respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Any more comments this evening? Okay. To wrap up here with of the folks that spoke this evening, some of these, we've, we all took notes on, and there are some that will be follow-up from people within the district if there are some specific action items there. But again, just to let everybody know, if there is something that's immediately in your school, it's always teacher, principal. Then to Scott Hade or Julie in the administration office, we take all these notes back and discuss with Superintendent Beam if there's anybody that needs to intervene or clarify on anything. So thank you for sharing your public comments this evening. Anything else that you want to cover tonight? Okay. All right. I guess at this time, we need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
And a second?
Second.
All right. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.